Members of the audience are welcome to ask questions and share insights on the committee of their whole agenda as the items, as they are being considered by the school board. Please raise your hand to be recognized by the board president. You are asked to come to the microphone so that everyone can hear your question or idea, including those people at home. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the agenda item being considered. So this meeting is called to order. Roll call vote please. I mean roll call, roll call, no vote.
Here.
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 President.
Here.
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 Very good. Is there approval of the agenda?
I made the motion for the agenda was printed.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, or, yeah, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Very good. All right, that'll be our last vote like that. All right, so we'll get into the presentations. The first item on the agenda is student staff and community recognitions, and there are none tonight, so cross off letter A. Moving on to letter B, consider Spooner Middle School yearbook contract. Carrie?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm just asking for permission to sign the new contract for the middle school yearbook for 1920 school year.
Are there any questions for Carrie? You all have the information and you've seen it already?
Yep.
All right. Is there consensus to move that to the board meeting on in two weeks?
Yes.
Yes. Very good. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to consider change in mathematics graduation requirements. Let me see. Oh, Mr. Frankiewicz. Go ahead.
Do you have the performal, all right?
Ah, yes.
Okay. Yeah, we're just talking about going back to the old graduation requirements. There's still going to be three credits of math required, except that for some reason we changed it to have geometry be a required course, and we instituted a tech math class for the people who weren't going into the college track, and so we are asking that that count in lieu of geometry for a requirement.
So what are you asking again? I read through that, but would you repeat that?
We're asking that we remove the requirement of having geometry in order to graduate and remaining with the three credits of math required for graduation.
Okay.
That's basically all there is.
All right. Mr. Scherz?
So the thought process there is that we do have some students that need extra support, and geometry is not necessarily an avenue for them to get their diploma. Mr. Frankowitz certainly answered the mathematical part better than I can, but the idea here is it's more of a, the tech math is more of applied math that does have geometry, it does have some of those same areas, it's just in a different way for students that are having that difficulty getting their math required.
Okay.
And may I add also that it's articulated with WITC, so the students can earn a WITC credits while they're taking their third credit of math here if that's their chosen track, that they, you know, are looking at attending a tech school. They would be also earning credits there while they're getting their math here.
With the new, with that tech career math?
That is, it's not new. It's been articulated for the last three or four years with WITC, so the students have been getting credits there already. It's just that the issue that we had, like Mr. Scherz says, is that there are kids that just are not equipped to be in geometry, and that is where they want to be is into a tech track, and this not only prepares them for that better, is it gives them, they're more equipped to handle the math that's in there.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Frank?
Well, you had.
Hello?
Hi.
Do you have anything to add to what he just said?
I don't know. Sorry. Eddie, if I can, anyway, sorry.
I think Mr. Frankiewicz did a nice job of explaining it.
Perfect.
All right. I just had one question.
Sure, go right ahead.
So you had mentioned that it wasn't always a requirement to have geometry to graduate. When did that change?
I think that changed last, it's, this would be the second year.
Okay.
That it was. Well, I don't know if I should be, unbeknownst to me, obviously, it got changed.
Okay.
And it was just kind of late on the math department that it had been changed and we were not aware of it, and then, you know, we're trying to make sure that we do what's best for the kids at that point in time and get them where they need to be for what they want to do next, and geometry wasn't it.
Okay.
So, were you finding that, were you finding that the kids that were taking that geometry class that were on that WITC track not passing that geometry class that was?
It was difficult for them, and not only that, it, I mean, we were finding out that they were figuring it out that it was required for graduation as a senior, and so all of the sudden they were second semester seniors in a class they had to have where if they would have probably chosen the tech track, and they probably took that class too, they would have gotten another elective in there instead of that geometry, you know, a tech class that they needed for where they were going.
Okay.
So part of that discussion will be with the individual students, that we want to have a better idea of what their goals are, and then match them with the math course that fits them for that area that they're headed. So, you know, as we move on, that discussion will happen with those students and get them down the right avenue for their success.
All right. Aaron?
Thanks. I just want to say that I appreciate that you put in to our presentation the benchmarks and goals for the tech career class, because even in a lot of technical careers, you have to have a geometry understanding and basis in math that will help you to succeed in that, and that's still covered in that class. So I didn't know, and that was good to know.
This is the same class they teach at WITC.
Which is a great opportunity for our students, so thanks for all the information that you provided.
All right. So is there a consensus to move this to the board meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, I'm coming.
So nice that you could show up. Have a nice night. All right. The next item on the agenda is item C, to consider change in, I'm sorry, to math essential outcomes and benchmarks.
The mission of the Spooner Area School District is to prepare each student for a successful future, and the first strategic priority is to advance student achievement. To that end, it's essential that we have written curriculum that answers this question for all stakeholders, whether you're a student, a parent or family member, a staff member or a community member. What do we expect students to know and do in a given curricular area? This evening, we bring the final draft of the proposed math curriculum, asking the school board to adopt this at your March regular meeting. Working on identifying essential math standards began actually last year under the leadership of Mrs. Cobbey when she was the district math specialist. Math work, a math work group this year consisting of elementary, middle and high school teachers along with the district math specialist did a lot of really great work this year in developing outcomes and benchmarks after identifying those essential standards. Having a guaranteed and viable curriculum is a foundational factor with its impact on student achievement. Guaranteed means that all students will have the opportunity to learn a given skill or concept. It sets a minimum standard of learning experiences that all children will have in a given subject area. Opportunity to learn has the strongest relationship with school level factors on student achievement as identified by curriculum and instruction expert Robert Marzano. A viable curriculum means that we make the commitment to providing the time, training, and resources required to successfully provide students with the opportunity to learn. I'm going to turn the presentation over now. This might be someone you haven't met before. This is Kayla Rudy. She is our district math specialist, and she joined the district this year. Kayla will share information and has some teacher partners along with her as well.
Thank you. I'm just going to walk you guys, first of all, through the process that happened to get to where we're at now. So just starting out, this began, like Dr. Aslan said, last year during the school year. Michelle Cobbey started the process when she was the math specialist. What she did was worked with grade level teams, and they collaborated and evaluated all of the Wisconsin Common Core math standards based on three criterias: endurance, leverage, and readiness. So endurance meant that that knowledge or skill would be valuable after the date they're assessed. The leverage means that the knowledge and skills are valuable in multiple disciplines, and then the readiness means that the knowledge and skills are necessary for success in the next skill or the next grade level of instruction. So they evaluated every standard on those three criterias, and after looking at those, the standards that scored the highest garnered the most points kind of became the priority standards. And so then we moved forward this year with those standards that were identified. And so a group of teachers from the middle school, high school, worked together throughout those school year and developed the essential outcomes and benchmarks, and I believe you guys have that form as well. And so we met, let's see, yeah, we worked through all the priority standards that were chosen. We created benchmarks and then made sure that there weren't any holes or any gross duplication throughout the entire document, that we covered a lot of areas and didn't spend multiple years on the same area. And Dr. Aslan, we'll just kind of walk you through the high school process real quick.
So high school process, a lot of similarity to the K-8 process, but then a departure. First off, I want to just acknowledge the good work that Mr. Frankowitz, Mrs. DeRusso, and Mrs. Franz did. Outstanding job going through there and identifying the coursework that would provide that opportunity for students to learn and then nailing the outcomes and benchmarks. What you'll see in that document that's different is it's not grade level outcomes anymore, but course level: pre-algebra, algebra, geometry, algebra II, tech and career math. And again, that would represent the math experience that we could expect any student in the high school to have here. So really good process, and you can see that they have really distilled it down to the most essential elements of those learning experiences.
And now that you have those outcomes and benchmarks, just kind of moving forward, what those benchmarks are going to mean for our math department? So they'll really guide a lot of things. They'll be what the majority of instructional time is going to be spent on, they'll be what is assessed, it's going to be what building level teams will have data-driven discussions about, and what the interventions will be centered around at each grade level. And it is expected that every student will reach a level of mastery or proficiency in these benchmarks in that document at their certain grade levels. With me, I also have fourth grade teacher Katie Stipetic and first grade teacher Colin Carlton, who were very involved in this process also. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
I do have one question. When we had talked about this last year, we had talked about the transition from elementary school to middle school and then middle school to high school.
Yep.
Now, you have, you have quite a few in the past few years coming out of the middle school.
Yep.
That are already taking what you consider at a high school level to be pre-algebra.
Yep.
What are you going to do with those students? That would be the question if, if you're, you know, if you're on a track from pre-algebra to algebra, geometry, algebra II, and tech career math.
Yep.
What if, what if an eighth grader has completed that pre-algebra or algebra? What do you plan on, what's your plan for those students that are higher learners?
So if they've completed the eighth grade early, are you asking, or?
Well, we have some, we have two students right now that are coming from the middle school to the high school, taking one of these high school courses.
Yep.
So.
So, you know, I think that's the beauty of the deep and rich math offerings that are offered at Spooner High School. You know, there are a variety of upper end math offerings for those students. The example that you cite just gives those students a leg up, you know, that they've completed part of that requirement, but there's still good offerings for them that they can take during their high school career.
I have a question. I see the word math essential, but this is math essential outcomes, not a program called Math Essentials.
Correct.
So we're not looking at purchasing a new curriculum, are we?
Not with this document here, nope. This is just identifying what benchmarks we expect kids to come out of that grade level with.
Okay.
Oh, I will want you to just maybe talk a little bit about all the other work that we have.
Okay. Yep, we are actually right now also just evaluating some possible resources that are available out there that, or that will help us to reach those benchmarks with every grade level as well. So we've evaluated some right now, or some this far.
Okay. Well, where in our, in our document is that the class that is being taught in the high school, like, I think it's all year round, where there's some?
The math support.
Right, the math support.
That would not have its own specific set of benchmarks, because it can actually work students through several classes, or several grade level benchmarks. So it would hopefully help us reach the, anything that they are, they don't have quite yet. It can go down to fourth grade benchmarks. So there's not one document that includes all of those, but it can address a lot of different benchmarks.
Thank you, Kayla.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Did you have any surprises or something? Do you see how this is going to help our students succeed in math?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that looking, thinking about those three, let's see, the three categories, I'll bring them up here real quick: endurance, leverage, and readiness. I don't know that a lot of teachers think about that just right off the top of their head. You know, when you really focus in on those three areas, it makes you realize what really is important, especially when you think what's going to be important next year and the following year. I think this is going to help, especially with our intervention time. Already this year, just thinking about it, it's helped us really focus in on during our win time, what I need, what skills we really need to focus on, and looking at the data for those skills, and putting kids into different groups, and how are we going to get there? So it's really focused instruction a lot, I think. Teachers aren't so worried about covering everything. They really can just pinpoint what's really, really important, kind of get their biggest bang for the buck almost.
I can imagine that takes a lot of weight off of their shoulders.
Yes, absolutely.
So like, up until this point, we've been told to teach everything to mastery, and so rather than trying to teach everything to mastery, we want to look at what's important from, for me, going from fourth grade to fifth grade, what does every student need to know to be successful in fifth grade? And so we're going to pinpoint those, like Kayla said, and really hound on those and take our win time, our what I need time in elementary school, and use that to teach those skills that they absolutely need to get to the next grade level. So that was kind of our aha was, what do they specifically need from here to get to the next grade level? So it was interesting, it was a great process. I think we really liked using the rubrics. Kayla provided us with rubrics so that we could look at each resource that we have that could possibly help us with these benchmarks too. So I know I've appreciated it, I'm sure Colin has too. So it's been really good.
And I think it's just that difference of a mile wide inch deep, where now we're kind of looking at an inch wide mile deep. If we can get a deeper understanding of these benchmarks and the things that are really important, it will carry over into other things that we do. It'll help them, help students understand how to solve other problems that they're not necessarily taught specifically, but it gives them more problem-solving skills and ways to solve problems.
I'd like just to repeat that, that what's expected, and I like that a lot, that it's expected that every student will reach a level of master or proficiency on these benchmarks. That's a great expectation.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So is there a consensus to consider this at our meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you again for coming up. How many times left, Dr. Alson? Do you have to go up there?
Six more.
All right, there you go, all right. So we're done with a couple of, one or two of them, maybe one. Consider the first semester 2019-20 ECCP and Start College Now applications. Go on.
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you for your grace on the timing of this. Did you get a chance to see the document of who has applied?
Not until we got here.
Okay, right.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I apologize for that. The deadline was Friday, so I worked hard today to get that in order for you. As you'll remember, the early college credit, Start College Now program is for students to take college-level coursework while in high school for both college and high school credit. Start College Now is more the Wisconsin Technical Colleges. ECCP, Early College Credit, is the UW system. So the list of students, these are the students who have applied by March 1st in order to take a fall college class, so for fall semester 2019-2020.
Yeah, that's quite a list.
Yes.
Now, and what's, what's the situation? I know, I know some of the students had four or five different classes listed. How many are they able to take?
Well, they are able, we will pay for, the law states will pay for 18 credits total in their career. So juniors and seniors generally. Because the deadline of March 1st, that's mandated by the state, is so early, the colleges don't have their fall schedules yet, and we don't have our fall schedules yet. So students are really guessing at this point. They're saying, these are courses that I think I would take if they're offered, and I have room in my schedule for them. So for the most part, they'll take one. A lot of these are also our dual enrollment students who are taking either Honors English III or Advanced Composition with Mr. Thornley, so they're not even taking, they're doing college credits, but it's right here in our building with our teachers. The other ones, you know, the sociology and things like that are courses that we don't offer that will fulfill a general education requirement when they go for whatever they major in wherever they go.
Any other questions? All right. Are we willing to put this forward for two weeks from now? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is educator effectiveness transition proposal.
Mr. Miller, can we get a little help on this up? I'm going to give you a little bit of setup while we get our technical difficulties straightened out here. Strategic priority number one in the Spooner Area School District is advancing student achievement. The Wisconsin Educator Effectiveness System is a performance-based continuous improvement system designed to improve the education of all students in the state of Wisconsin by supporting guided, individualized, self-determined professional growth in the development of educators. The Wisconsin Educator Effectiveness System has been a requirement for all Wisconsin public schools since 2012. This evening, Mr. Scherz and I are going to propose a change to the system as we use it here in the Spooner Area School District that we believe will have a positive impact on teaching and learning. So our proposed action is to make a change from the current system that we're using, and that is the Danielson, Charlotte Danielson Framework for Teachers, also known as the Department of Public Instruction Model, and change to what is called the Strong Teacher and Leader Effectiveness Performance System, or the CISA VI model. We would look to do a phased transition of teachers who received their summative evaluation last school year, or will receive it this school year, and also teachers that were new to the district this year, and we'd look to move them over to the Strong Model System for next school year. Phase two of that move would come the following year, where we have teachers that would receive their summative evaluation. This year, we would, we would move them forward from there. Little bit of background on this. The Department of Public Instruction requires teachers and principals to be evaluated using the Educator Effectiveness Program every three years, and you have a link on there that has a really involved flow chart, but it tells you who has to be evaluated under that system, and then which positions don't. Little bit about the Danielson Model. So the Danielson Model composition, and I'm going to go slow because there's a lot of moving parts here. It consists of four domains. In those four domains, they're broken down into 22 different components, and each component contains one to five elements. What I'd like you to take out of this is there are an incredible amount of moving parts here, and what we're finding is that people are putting more time and energy just fulfilling the requirement of the composition of this than they are on reflective practices and the very important dialogues about teaching and learning and professional growth that need to come. The Strong Model composition, it's composed of seven performance standards, which are very straightforward. Both the Danielson and Strong Models use the frontline computer program, and so saved material that people have gathered using the Danielson Model will transition over to the Strong Model without having to re-enter it or losing it electronically. So that's an important piece, because again, under the Danielson Model, wow, are people gathering up a lot of artifacts to put in there. Our proposed action's pretty straightforward. We would ask to make the change from the Danielson Framework, pick up the Strong Model, and again, the transition that I talked about earlier.
So if you, that's, it's all right. Okay. So, you know, I'm going to summarize what's.
Can you speak into the microphone? Thank you.
I just like looking at you.
Yeah.
Okay. When you look at it from practical application, from my perspective as a principal, one of the things we've talked about before is that, that when we do an evaluation, what I'm looking for is how do we stick to our strategic priority and give teachers support? So with the difference in my mind between the Strong Model, which we're asking to move to, and the Danielson Model, is I can fine-tune what I want my teachers to really work on in that year. Whereas if you look at the Danielson Model, if I go into a classroom, spend 45 minutes, and that's the requirement, 45-minute evaluation, I can guarantee you I'm not going to see 22 of those components. It's not realistic, it's not going to happen. Okay? Now, certainly I'd want to be doing more than that 45-minute observation. The point is, we want to be able to work with our strategic priority, specifically improving academics, and there are specific things that I'd want to work on as the building principal to give that professional development. I want to be able to identify areas where teachers need support and then provide that support using our evaluation system. In a nutshell, if you were to ask CISA XI, for example, which model do they support? Because these are the two models of the state, they would be very political on that, but by the time you're done with the conversation, they would be pointing towards the CISA VI. I think we can get more support for professional development for our principals by using the CISA VI model as well. It's just a less cumbersome, I think the teachers will appreciate it more. It's actually a model that I've been trained in as well, and now that I've used both, I can tell you which, which one is more beneficial to students. So like I said, and I think the plan Dr. Aslan put forward of moving it through will be effective. I've been on the kind of plain phone tag with Julie Hallbrook from CISA VI, and I know they will give us the support that, that we need to, to move to this new process. Questions?
Is there, is there as much training needed to be done by the principals in order to learn this model as opposed to the model that we now use?
The training is, I would say the difference is, it's much more doable with the CISA VI model.
I get it.
It would take, I think, the Strong Model is somewhere between, or Danielson Model is somewhere between 40 and 80 hours of training.
I know.
Lot of components.
I know. I, I was under that at one point, correct?
Sure.
Not to train, to evaluate, but to be evaluated. And I always kind of scratched my head on that one, so thank you.
Sure.
I would make the recommendation that we move this forward to our meeting.
Yes.
And March. Yes. And March, to, in two weeks, all right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, the next item on the agenda is to consider the 2019-2020 teacher contracts.
The Board of Education was presented with a document outlining the proposed teacher contracts for 1920. If there's any questions, I'll take questions at this time. The contracts included a 2.44% increase, which is the CPI for this year, and also included a staff increase.
Are there any questions? All right, hearing none. Shall we move this forward to the board meeting?
Yes.
Yes? Yes. Okay, there's our consensus. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to, the auditing service RFP recommendations.
Yep, we're asking that the board table this item until the April 1st committee of the whole due to lack of responses to the RFP.
All right, we can do that. So we will not make a recommendation at all. All right, thank you. Good luck with that. Keep searching out there. All right, next item on the agenda is Referendum Facilities Committee Update.
You, I'm gonna need some assistance again here, please. So, we've talked a little bit about strategic priorities tonight. This is a big deal, because as we consider this, really, this looks at all three of our strategic priorities. Number one, advanced student achievement. Number two, stabilized district operations and infrastructure. And number three, expand communication avenues. This work definitely impacts all the districts' work towards the three strategic priorities. You'll see in the proposed composition of the Referendum Facilities Committee that, you know, we've really worked to have a diverse cross-section and try to be mindful of the recommendations. Thank you very much that Luke Schultz from CISA 10 had given us. So you'll see, we recommend a 10-person committee, two board members, Ryan Predney, three community members, two teachers, a support staff, and a high school student. That gets us toward 10. Community members would be, I stand corrected, community members, teachers, and support staff would be selected through an application process, and staff would be paid at Level 1 on the committee membership reimbursement scale as listed in the employee handbook. What we would look for from you is a concurrence that you're okay with the structure, so that we could begin to try to solicit people to be part of this committee, with the hope that we could bring names back to you in a couple of weeks for appointment to the committee and get forward with this important process. Questions that I can answer for you?
How would you select the high school students?
We would work with the high school administration on finding a student that would be willing to make a commitment, because it will be a number of meetings. Yes? Other questions?
Anyone can attend these meetings, correct?
That's correct. They will be open meetings, and because it is a committee of the school board, they'll be posted.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? All right, so can we concur on the structure of the Referendum Facilities Committee?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Item J, CISA 10, 2019-2020 Shared Services Contract.
Each March, we are required to bring forward our shared services contracts for board approval. You have the documentation for the CISA 10 contract, and we're just looking for approval to move forward with that.
Has there been any major changes in it?
Nope.
Okay. Is there, do you agree to move this forward to the March meeting?
Yes, yes.
Yes, very good. And then the next item, Item K in the presentations, is the CISA XI, 2019-20, Shared Services Contract.
Unfortunately, we don't have that contract yet. We were told that we will receive it on Wednesday, but pending any drastic changes, we're asking that we can move it forward so that it can be part of the board meeting on the 18th.
So, we will, I would suggest that we move it forward to our meeting, but yet we get it as soon as you have it sent out.
As soon as we have it, we will send it.
Then we can look at it.
Yep.
All right, is that agreed? Okay, very good. Yes. All right, on to the discussion and action, School-Community Relations. Kevin?
First thing we have is Consider Semiannual Newsletter. We had discussed this at the previous committee of the whole.
Yep, so what you have are a couple of quotes within that information, and it's, they're quotes for a couple of different-sized products. If you recall, last board meeting, we shared a full-size example that came from, it came from the Altoona School District. You also have a quote in there for one that would be a half-size type document, so something that would be about this size and approximately six pages in length. In addition, Caitlin has gathered some information about the postage piece of it. So your three costs involved would be, first of all, we'd have to pay someone to put that together, and that's not anything that we have a quote on right now, because we'd need to drill down a little bit more in terms of what size we're looking at. We have a little bit of information then about what the copying, the reproduction cost would be, based on a variety of different numbers and based on a couple of different sizes. And then you have an estimate on what we would be looking at for postage to get this to all households within the district. So, we just, we look for a little bit of direction from the board as to whether this is something that we would want to move forward with and begin some work on.
And how many did you figure would the district would be using?
Roughly 5,000.
Roughly 5,000? Okay.
Have we attempted to go for a local printer as far as we go out of town?
Yes, you're looking for a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
I would make that.
Consensus? Yes?
Yep.
Could we have a breakdown, maybe Caitlin or Shannon, like kind of all on the same page? I mean, I'm going from page to page to page, and if we could see that, that'd be wonderful.
Is this the attempt to reach the demographics, or the people that aren't on Facebook, aren't on, aren't looking at the website, things like that?
Yep, so we have, you know, we're reaching a lot of people via those avenues, but we do realize that there is a contingent of community members that we're not reaching, and that this would help solve that.
Okay. Okay.
Next thing we have is Legislative Updates. Last week, our governor had released the state budget, and the governor's state budget there contained over 70 initiatives that affect education and students. These are listed under What's Best for Kids in the State Budget Summary. We won't go through all 70 of them tonight, but here's a couple of them. One was to provide 618,822,000 in general state aid across the biennium. Then another one was to restore the requirement that the state provide two-thirds funding. There was a proposal for an increase to address the need for access to mental health services for school-age youth. And on another note, too, there, in order to provide more accountability and transparency with the state's private school voucher programs, Governor Evers will propose including information on property tax bills about the state aid withheld from public school districts in which private voucher pupils reside and its impacts it has on property taxes. He also, last week, announced a proposed freeze on taxpayer-subsidized voucher programs and independent charter expansions. That's all I have for that, for legislative updates. And on 30, 60, 90-day planning, again, we got the election coming up, April 2nd. The April 15th will be the last meeting of this current board. We do have prom on April 27th, and our spring play on March 22nd and 24th. I don't know if you have anything, anybody else have anything they would like to add to that, but that's what I have. That'd be my report.
Carrie, do you have anything to add to that?
For graduation.
Come on up to the microphone. Oh, all right. Kevin?
Graduation?
Graduation, yes.
Coming up.
Coming up.
Right. Okay.
It's the last day of school for the seniors.
They know when that is, right? All right. Actually, it's the day before, oh yeah, it probably is the last day.
They finish out April. I think you guys finish out April.
Yep.
Okay, good, that's it? Thank you.
That's it.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Personnel Committee. Consider District Calendar Committee Membership. District Calendar Committee Membership, correct.
Mr. Hamm put together the list of staff that will be participating on the calendar committee, and we are looking for consensus to move it forward to the March 18th board meeting.
Great, and Mr. Hamm, you can just shake your head, yes, all these people agreed to put the time in to make another, a calendar that's two years out, correct?
They agreed, and we have staff numbers that are keeping on committee this year, so there's.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Some are consistent, but.
So there have been a change in a couple of the people? All right, thank you. For the people at home, I'm just repeating what you said. All right, thank you. Is there consensus to move this to our meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
Yes. All right, very good. Next item on the agenda is Consider Employee Handbook Committee Membership.
Same situation. We are looking for consensus to move this committee forward. I can tell you that we've made an effort to include different staff members on this committee as well. There is some, a few carryovers.
All right, is there consensus to move this forward, this committee forward to the next, for approval, the next meeting? Yes?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Hamm, and who organized this one? Dr. Haslam, did you do that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, thank you, sir, for asking all those people and getting them all to volunteer. So, thank you. We had to give you a little part of that.
Thank you.
Very welcome. And the next item on the agenda is Consider the 2019-20 teacher contracts, which we have already decided upon, so we'll skip that. And then Consider Staff Listening Sessions.
So, we bring this one before you tonight. We know that the staff listening sessions have been in place a couple of school years here and have had a little bit of an evolution each time. So the discussion has been, to date, it's been once a year. So, the idea would be to include two of those staff listening sessions during the course of the year. So one to occur kinda in the October and November timeframe, and one to occur in the timeframe that we have now, which is that April-May timeframe. And you'll recall, last year, when we revised the format, you know, more of a dialogue, so an opportunity for staff members to come forward and showcase some of the good things, some of the many good things that are going on out there in the schools. Also to bring concerns forward, and when they bring concerns forward, of course, they bring a suggested solution for it as well. Also, the discussion of the importance of the building principal being part of those conversations as well. If we're gonna focus on sharing success and problem-solving, then it's important that the principal's part of that discussion as well.
Great idea. So, shall we move this forward to our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, very good. Next item is Item Five, Discussion and Action of Budget Buildings and Grounds. Robert?
Well, I think the first matter is Consider the Spooner Middle School Yearbook Contract. We put a presentation, and we've agreed, I believe, to move it to the next board meeting. So I'm not sure there's anything left to discuss on that matter. The next matter is Auditing Service RFP Recommendations. And again, that was on the presentation side, and it was tabled because we have yet to receive enough bids to discuss. The next matter is Referendum Facilities Committee Update, and that was somewhat discussed, but is there anything further to update us on with that?
I don't have any further information to update you on. Are there any further questions?
Not other than, since we are discussing the "R" word, which has always been known as the "R" word for as long as I can remember, I think we've all, we're all in agreement that when there's a council meeting or a board meeting, at some point, we're gonna try and put that topic, whether we have anything to discuss or not, on the agenda. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So that if people wanna discuss it or talk about it or have questions, they can do so, but also it gets it out there so that people know we are, we are in the early stages of that process. The next, if there are no further discussions on that, the next one is the update on the Department of Justice Grant Projects. Is there one at this time?
Yep, just one quick update that we have. Will be, due to a lack of response for the film installation from our film vendor, we will be switching the vendors to provide that service, and we'll be looking to get an estimate from the new vendor, who also works with CISA 10 and a new timeline.
Any questions on that?
Did, are we, is there a lack of the film in?
I'd say there's a lack of time to install it by the vendor that CISA 10 originally went with. I think they just became too inundated with.
Overcommitted.
Yep.
Okay, great.
That's what I thought.
When I was down at Milwaukee there for that convention, I had talked to one of the guys that installed this, and they're swamped.
Okay, all right. I understand that. Okay.
Okay, thanks for the update. The next matter is CISA 10 Shared Services Contract. This was also discussed in the presentation section, and I think we agreed to move that to the next board meeting for further action. So thank you for the presentation. The next matter is the CISA XI Shared Services Contract, and I think I heard that that was tabled.
Well, we're gonna move it forward, but we'll provide you with the information as soon as we get it, which should be Wednesday. We're being told that we'll receive it Wednesday.
Okay, so there's no further action on that one tonight. The next matter is the Financial Update. Shannon, do you have anything for us on that?
You know, just one thing to note, that this is for the January Financial Update. You'll see that we did receive a large amount of tax settlements, which is typical. If there's any questions, I can answer any, otherwise we can move that forward to the board.
Can you, at this point, is there, what's our targeted, projected deficit for the year?
Yep, so we're still sticking to that 100, approximately $100,000 deficit spending. And as you remember, that was due to the board deciding to fund the CLC program for this year due to the lack of the grant. So, due to any unforeseen spring things happening, we're sticking with that estimate.
Okay, well, that's a good number, and it's a number we've been working towards for many years. As you may remember, five years ago, we were at about a $900,000 deficit, and now we're, we've got it under control, and, but it's changing all the time. And it goes up and down daily depending on the needs and the outcomes of our financial situations. But as of now, thank you very much for that. The next matter is the Approval of the Vouchers. Kevin and Nathaniel, since you were really on the budget committee, have you guys had an opportunity to look at those at all?
Yes, I have, and they look fine to me.
Is the snow plowing, is that above, below? I do know.
We do have snow plowing.
It's above. We're gonna go over budget on snow plowing for the year.
But I do know.
No.
Our staff have been, a lot of our guys have been saving us money by how hard they've been working, so I just wanna give kudos to our custodians for the hard work that they've been doing to save us money. Shout out to them, so I just wanted to thank them, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. So I guess it's our, is it our recommendation to move this to the board meeting and tell them we've approved the vouchers?
Yes.
For this month?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Robert. Right, Paul?
On the policy.
On the Policy Committee, you received a whole slug of policies. These are all Neola updated policies. I don't see any of these here that have been generated by us specifically. These are all Neola updates. We sit down periodically and get updates every three or four months. We have everything in here from conflict of interest, staff discipline, to harassment, open enrollment, school visitors. This is the first reading of these updated policies, and I'm gonna ask that this be the first reading to be presented to the Board. I truly did sit and go through many of these. It's not an issue of whether or not we agree with the policy or not. The issue is that it's an updated policy that'll keep us out of trouble, which some of these, we don't have policies to start with. So, at least we have a policy that we will follow if any of these items come up. So, I'm asking for a recommendation to forward it to the Board for the first reading.
Is there consensus?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So, is this is considered the first reading, or...
No, we're just bringing it to the Board for the first reading.
For the first reading. All right, very good, thank you. And then, the Curriculum Committee.
We heard, Item B, we heard about the math graduation requirements. That's already been discussed. The math essential outcomes and benchmarks that has been discussed and forwarded. The first reading for the first semester next fall for our students' college level courses, that has been discussed and forwarded. We have a SEAHockey Co-op proposal presented in front of you. And do we want to read that right now, or how do we honor to go through that?
I'm not sure if anybody would like to speak to anything tonight? Anyone raising their hand? Couple people? All right. Come on down. Let's start on my right, so gentlemen in the hat with the glasses on your shirt. Please identify yourself, and we know that you're one to talk about SEAH. Or the Co-op. Come on down to the microphone. Thank you.
Speak into the mic.
Yes, and then...
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, but our people at home have to hear you, too. People here can hear you, that's fine.
Can you hear me?
And state your name.
My name is Brad Hanson, and I, my family, my kids and my family have the Spooner Civic Center. And I appreciate the opportunity to have a discussion with you or to be able to comment with you folks today. You know, I just wanna real quick say that I don't know all of the, I don't know all of the politics and stuff of all, all of the things with hockey. I do know this, I have four kids that are adult and grown now, and I was involved in all of their sporting things that they had with travel. It was in baseball and football and traveling and all that kind of stuff. And when I originally, when we originally acquired the facility, it was more as a dry storage facility type thing. Then out through a transition of a bunch of different things, and somebody else coming from the East Coast to come and want to do hockey and stuff there, we agreed to that. And then, that didn't work out with them. So, what we did is, is I loaded up our whole family. We're a family owned and operated business. My youngest is 31 now, and oldest is 40. And we all came up here, and we said, okay, you know, what can we do here? And through that, that transition of going through that, we realized this is a pretty cool place. It's a nice community, and I always, when I drive down Main Street, every time I drive into town, I'd be looking at this facility going, why is this thing here, and what should be done with it, and how should it go? And we all made a conscious decision, my whole family, and said, you know what? Let's dig into this thing and really make this thing happen for the community of Spooner. And I was able to make some contacts with the people, the Youth Hockey Association here with SEAH. Wonderful people, they all are involved. And people just kinda came out of the woodwork and said, you know, kudos to you guys. This is a really good thing. And last year, when, you know, we, as a family, said, you know, we're gonna make sure that we keep this thing going all the way through the season because of all the kids that were involved and the figure skating. And it's, I've learned and come to the realization that it's a, it's a, it's a big deal and plays an intricate role in a lot of the goings on that are happening in Spooner. And I want you to know, as a Board, that we have set this up in a way that, that the longevity of this is going to be here for a long time to come. This is, I don't know of all of the past and all the politics and the things that have gone on with that facility, but I can tell you that we're setting this up in a way that it runs on its own. It generates its own ability to be a viable business within the community. One of the things that we're doing is, probably everybody has always heard that, the power expense that's there. We're working right now with putting a solar array. Hopefully, within the next three months, we'll have, the whole roof will have a solar array across the entire roof. That'll be the first one in this community, by the way. Nobody has had one. We're working real closely with Focus on Energy and some other people to be able to put that together. I do know that the hockey program with the Co-op that is going on, that, you know, I don't, all of the parties that are involved in this, I should just say, I can tell you from my own community and where I come from, if it's at all possible, to have, you know, your high school team being able to play in your high school town, I would think that that would make the most sense for people to be able to try to see through, to make that happen. I think that that is something that's a big deal to this community. We started something three months ago where we said, you know what? We're involved in this community. We feel really good about the things that are going on here. We started a slogan at the restaurant there and on the facility that says, "We're putting unity back into the community." Everything that you see will say, "We're putting unity back into the community." May not seem like a big deal, but it is a big deal because people are actually responding to that and having pride about that in what's going on in their community. And anybody is welcome to come there and enjoy and realize what this place is all about. Lastly, I want to say to you, and I'm saying some of these comments because they have been said to me multiple times by people that, well, how do we know you're going to be here next year? Or how do we know you're gonna be here a month from now? We didn't open the Spooner Civic Center because of dollars and cents, because of money. We have other businesses that we do that we, that our income is derived from. So, there's, we're not sitting there going, well, gee whiz, I hope we do well. I hope we can make the payment on the place next month. That's not the situation at all. The situation really is, is that we feel very, very good and strong and have a very, a large attachment to this community and want to see that place and the hockey program succeed. And I believe that with the help of these fine gentlemen up here that are with the High School Association and all of these wonderful people with SEAH, that this can all be brought together and have a wonderful program. But it's gonna take a vote from you folks to be able to do that. And I think that by you doing that, you'll bring these two groups together to be able to work the things out and really build a program. SEAH's done a wonderful job at what they're doing from a year ago, two years ago, from what I've seen them do, it's been amazing. They've done an amazing job with the high school program. It's amazing. Both sides have a tremendous amount of pride in the work that they've done. There's no doubt about it. But the fact remains is, if you have the opportunity to bring all that home and put unity back into the community, it's up to you folks. Any questions, feel free to ask me. I'll answer them the best that I possibly can.
Any questions? Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Right. Next in line? Oh, we had one over there. All right.
I'm Guy Evans. I'm assistant coach for the Iceman. And I absolutely agree with pretty much everything he just said. I think it's wonderful. I love what they're doing. They're doing a beautiful place with the whole Civic Center. It's wonderful. And SEAH's doing a great job. And yeah, I want to see Spooner have their own high school team. It's just not realistic right now. If you're looking at the numbers, you guys all got the same email that I got. So, we know that Cumberland is not interested in breaking up the Co-op, and Shell Lake is not interested. So, that's, there they both said no. So, that leaves two seniors, three juniors. I believe it's six or seven sophomores for next year, and the rest would be freshmen. It's not enough to make a team, and it's certainly not enough to make a competitive team. And if your team's not gonna be competitive, then the kids aren't happy, the parents aren't happy, you get fighting in the locker rooms, you end up losing players, they quit, they go by the wayside. The lesser players don't have a JV team, so they don't get any ice time, so they quit. And then you lose your whole program, and you have to start over from scratch. That's what I'm trying to avoid. That's what my biggest concern is. Yeah, I want to see as much hockey in Spooner as we can get. I live here. I definitely want to see that. I think everybody does. That's the biggest concern that I'm having right now with SEAH is we all have the same end game, the same goal in mind, but they still haven't talked to us. And, you know, if we can work together, then maybe we can do that. But there's no way that next year is the right year for it, and that's what this vote's all about, so.
Thank you, Guy.
Thank you.
Down the line? Are you the next one? All right, come on down.
My name's Eric Larson. I'm a SEAH Board Member, a physical therapist here in town. And I just want to thank you again for having us. I appreciate it. I know it's a little bit of work when you guys are busy to listen to some factions that have different ideas. I want to thank Matt for being here tonight, and our president, and our vice president, and helping us kind of put the numbers in place that he asked for that we could bring forward and at least have our presentation, whether it goes one way or another. So, I appreciate that. And I appreciate you guys coming out here, too, to be honest. I get where you're at. My oldest boy's nine. And I've got a five-year-old, a four-year-old after that. And so, this won't affect me. It won't affect you. I get it. Your boys are upperclassmen, juniors and seniors.
Speak to the Board.
Juniors and seniors. So, I get where they're at. And what I want to say is, I personally, speaking on my own behalf and with the people I've worked with on the Board, it's not about tearing something apart, okay? The same way a referendum isn't about raising taxes, okay? It's a byproduct of what will happen. But what you're trying to do is build something. You're not trying to raise everybody's taxes. You're trying to build a facility or facilities and compensate teachers, something that you can look forward and put a flag in here and be proud of and attract other people to talent, to raise your tax base. And that's the same thing that we're trying to do as a nonprofit board, is say, you know, let's take this Spooner Proud flag and plant it here and do something so my nine-year-old, my seven-year-old, or my six-year-old, those kids can have something to look up to and try to progress towards in their hometown. And as far as the numbers are concerned, you know, we can go back and forth. They are what they are. They're in front of you. Look at them, do with them what you will, okay? But let's have a pathway at some point to say, all right, here's where they should be. If this is what you want, SEAH, that's why we're bringing it to you. So, we can have some leadership there. We've brought this to you the same way they've brought things to you so you can look at your facts and make a determination. As a business guy, I look at it kind of cut and dry sometimes, maybe too much from time to time. But the way I look at those projections and the money you're gonna be spending busing kids an hour down the road doesn't seem to make sense to me in one, two, and three years. If we look at those number cutoffs, you know, in two years, you're gonna be spending maybe $25,000 to $30,000 to bus kids an hour away at 2:00 in the afternoon. Okay? That, to me, doesn't seem to be a good use of time, money, resources. You know, and I think, Paul, you said something along the lines of, we're not sure the place will stay open, and if we decide to have a program here, then we lost our leverage as far as negotiating ice contract. What I would say is, you have that leverage right now. You can look back at that guy and say, all right, you want it here? Tell me what it's gonna cost. Then you can make that decision. You can balance all these things out, but there has to be a question and an answer, which is, rather than, we shouldn't have this here, but how do we, how do we have it here? How do we do this? And how do we do it correctly? And that's to Guy's point. Let's do it correctly. Let's have the pathway. We are where we are now, good or bad, but let's come together. Let's make a decision that's gonna work for everybody. And that's what I'm asking for. That's what we're asking for. That's what they're asking for, is leadership. To come through and plant that Spooner Proud flag and say, this is who we are. This is the way we're gonna do things. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Yep.
Someone else had their hand up? Oh, we went out of order, but that's okay. You yielded. Thank you.
My name is A.J. Musfelt. I am originally from Wausau, Wisconsin. I moved up here about four years ago. Been working with the youth program for the last two. I'd just like to say that the amount of growth and the interest in this program is beyond belief. In two years of working with this program, I've seen it just continue to mountain grow. Just within the last week, I've had three separate parents ask me about four separate kids starting to play this game. That being said, working with the Pee Wees, the development, from just a year ago to now, the program is just making strides. We're ready now, I think, I believe, we're ready to go now. We have the numbers. We have the support from our community. We have the support from our youth program, which is the most important basis of it all, is to make sure that we have a solid base and foundation that we have. So, that's just my approach there. Any questions?
So, yeah, is what you're sporting today, is that hockey here?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I was at the event on Friday night, and there was some sort of a contest.
That event alone, if you were at the event, I mean, just the pride that we have, the parents and the kids and everything we do here, it means a lot to the, you know, community and everything else. In Wausau, I played for Dan Bauer. Anyone who has been around hockey in this town knows who Dan Bauer is. He really instilled, you know, the effort and the character is way more important than the outcome of what's gonna happen in the game. So, for me, yeah, we give them a guy older, we're gonna be ready to go. Right, depending now, right, next year, wouldn't go in state, probably not. You look at any developing teams, other than the Vegas Knights, it doesn't happen. Takes time. We understand that. What we're asking for is to get our start and to get that base.
Thank you, A.J. Anyone else? Yes?
Hello again. Probably don't have to introduce myself, but I will.
Well, you should.
I'm Kerry Ramses, on the SEAH Board. And I wanted to ask a few questions of you because we did have some follow-up information that was given to you after the last Cal Meeting and wanted to know if there were questions of clarification that you needed from the documentation, specifically numbers, because that's been a big concern. Civic Center, that has been a big concern, and also the timing of this. Does anyone have any questions on the data that I could answer?
No. No, I guess not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, and we hope that you'll consider this and give us some clarification and some steps to move forward with the leadership so that all of us can be unified and we won't have to bring this to you again. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
You want to speak one more time?
One more.
One more state...
One more time for 30 seconds.
Yes, you can have 30 seconds of my life. Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Brad.
You're welcome. I just wanted to comment on one thing that the young man had to say, the assistant coach. I look at all the folks that are here. I am a person with a seventh-grade education, and I'm here to tell you that... I look at all the folks that are here, I am a person with a seventh grade education, and I'm here to tell you that whenever I hear anybody say, that it won't happen, it can't happen, we can't do this, or we can't do that, that's a challenge to me inside, that says, you know what? For all those that say it can't, those folks right there have proven that absolutely wrong, because the numbers that I talked to them about two years ago, from where they were then, and where they're at today, and the momentum that's growing, and the kids that I see coming into that facility, Rick here, I forgot to mention him, and I shouldn't have, he's a member of this community, he runs the facility down there, he's doing a wonderful job. Our expectations and goals that we have set are through the roof, and it, it, we can show you the numbers, Rick can show you the numbers down there, we have Open Skate and, and Learn to Skate every single week down there. For anybody that would say, I can't, to what's going on here in your town? It's happening. And it's just going to take a vote from you folks to have the courage to say, you know what? We're going to put unity back in the community too, and make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll welcome back on the third.
All right, very good.
I will carry on, I'll continue, thank you everybody for speaking. As the chair of this committee, I pushed very hard to bring this in front of the board. The reason I did that is because when this first came up to me, the proposal came to me was, we are going to form a co-op in Spooner, and we're going to bring in Cumberland and Shell Lake back to Spooner, because we now have ice in Spooner. And I pushed real hard, and I told the group then, I said, I need you to sell this to us, you got to come forward and bring us together and force us to do it. I will say, as far as the comment about me earlier, I did go to the ice arena, I did ask about numbers, I did ask how much, I did leave my name, I did ask somebody, please get ahold of me, so that we know what we're dealing with here on the board, as far as our cost. We have a proposal in front of us, and I'm going to ask that we support the proposal, and the reason is, it's, when it comes down to the numbers, without the other groups involved, the other two schools that originally were going to be here with us, our costs as the school district to run this hockey team as a standalone team will be the same, whether we have thirteen students or seventeen students. We will pay the same amount for ice time, we will pay the same amount for transportation, but it really comes down to, what is our total cost going to be if we stay where we're at versus with the co-op, versus take a standalone and take the chance of, we don't know what that cost is going to be at this time. And my recommendation is to listen to what the administration first came to us with, my original recommendation that they came to me with was, number one, they recommend, recommend Spooner area school district board make a commitment to stay with the Iceman co-op through the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two hockey season. Number two, we recommend that the board select Spooner area school district athletic director, high school principal, and the director of operations and district administrator to work with other members of, of other member districts to update the co-op agreement to reflect a clarification of the financial responsibilities, fees, and payments for all of member districts. A host district for rotations of schedule, so in other words, who does the administrative end of it. Games and practice scheduled to provide home opportunities for member districts. Establish the criteria for the dissolution of the co-op. What that is all about is, we all understand that a co-op is an opportunity for our students to participate in a sport that we normally would not have enough students for, that is where they get involved in the co-op. We need to have some more clarification as to when we get out of that co-op, that's where we are here tonight. Not the fact that everyone doesn't want hockey here in Spooner, but when is the right time to get out of the co-op, so that it's going to be successful for our students, so that we know that they're going to be playing hockey into the future, and that we're not back here in a couple of years trying to reorganize, trying to get back into a co-op, because something didn't work out the way we wanted it to happen. Item E is to establish criteria for member districts to exit the co-op, and establish standalone teams, which is what I just spoke about. And number three is to target the date to revise the agreement, which would be for the, the beginning of the nineteen twenty season, and my recommendation is that we bring it to the board next two weeks to remain in the co-op, that is a one-year contract, at the same time we're establishing a time, or a process to get out of the co-op later on.
Paul, where, when did we ever see that recommendation? Where, where are you reading that from?
I've got a printout of it, that's my recommendation for you.
This is what you've?
This is from our recom, recommendation from our administration, so this is what I'm presenting to you right now.
Did we have, have we ever seen that document?
I don't know, did you send it to everybody or not? Not to you?
When did you receive it, Paul?
I received it today.
Okay.
But I did have conversations about this earlier, and this is what we decided, the, the biggest problem we're having is how to, how to dissolve, when do we get out?
I agree, and I agree with all of those recommendations, my frustration is that that wasn't given to, that we've gone through all of this time, all of this conversation, all of this conflict, which is not bringing unity to our community. It is not doing what, what's best for kids, it's not doing what's best for us, everyone involved in hockey. And it's, it's frustrating to me that we're at this point and hearing these recommendations, we've given all of this time for back and forth.
We, we should have this conversation right now then, that's why we're here.
Okay, this process was done badly, this process should not have been, it should not have fallen this way. We should have had administrative recommendations before, and this is nothing against Seaha, but before you ever appeared on an agenda of ours. It is a youth organization recommending, giving data which is really useful, and I appreciate what you've offered and informed us of, for a high school team formed as a co-op at a high school level. And part of the process that was missed is that support from the community includes the current team, and there's no way that we can change our mind at the high school level if you don't have support across the board. And so, I, I don't know, I'm not saying that this blame falls on any one person or any one individual, but it was badly done, and we have to figure out how to do it right the next time. And this admit, this recommendation to have minimum numbers and a plan for how to dissolve the co-op, when the timing is right, based on information from multiple parties, is a great idea. But I don't believe that we should have gone through what we've gone through to get to this, so I'm.
I guess, I'm going to say that I disagree with you under the fact that this is what the community as a whole has, does, this is our role, is to come through, and as the chair of this, we will sit down and you, everybody in this board has had the opportunity to read the same emails, to communicate with the same administration, to administrate, communicate with the same business manager, you've all had the opportunity to do the same thing. Now, the question is, is how much should we be communicating before we get to this meeting? That's the problem.
Us the board.
Zero, we should not be communicating as a board. What we do is, we come with the recommendation, we can sit and talk about it, you can go home and read it, you can come back at the next meeting and say, I don't agree with this, let's do something different, but this is the recommendation coming from me, and that's the thing, is we don't sit down and communicate ahead of time.
We don't.
We don't sit down and run this back and forth. We know that we have some issues, and I've got an issue here, this is how we're going to try and resolve it in the future, exactly what you're talking about. We're not going to put out a standard number and say, when you hit the magic number of this, it's going to happen, because we don't have numbers, we don't have the finances to support what that number might be, we don't know.
Well, I think that we have a very good idea of the range of costs that it will take to both have a standalone team and a co-op team. We've been given all of that information in Excel spreadsheets for the last number of years. So, cost is, it's going to cost us money to run the hockey program, and it varies depending, but that shouldn't be the driving force behind what's best for hockey, and what's best for students, and what's best for Spooner. I agree that it has a huge role in it, but the concerns that I have for not feeling like this is the right time to have a standalone team have little to do with finances at this point, and a lot more to do with the guarantee of numbers that have been presented to, to us. There's no full one hundred percent guarantee that you can tell me the numbers that you have for this upcoming year will hold true, it's just impossible. It's impossible for you to say that they won't, it's impossible for you to say that they will, and it's impossible, as much as I love the information that you provided about the Civic Center, and I have so much hope that you are accurate, and that it's, the longevity of the place will hold true, there's no way to guarantee that. So the only time fact, the only factor that we have here is time to prove it out, and that's where this plan, and putting in all the elements to see how that will go. But to say that this is based on finances, and that's why you don't think we should go with this route, is really, I mean, I believe that our administration had concerns in the beginning, so the concerns in the beginning should have been clarified, and it should have been stopped at that point, and then going, I think that we, the committee as a whole maybe has been construed into something that I don't believe it is for. It's for giving voice to community and people to come and give input, but it is not so that every decision has to come before the board, that's why we have an administration.
We, we have to do one thing, it's all we have to do, the only thing we have to do is the top line, we have to decide at our next meeting to approve or not approve to continue into the co-op for next year.
Well, I would, I would recommend that we table this suggestion and this proposal indefinitely, and based on those recommendations, come up with a plan for how we're going to face it in the future.
Right, the only thing we need to do at this meeting is to approve or to rec, make a recommendation for approval of the co-op for the next meeting. The other discussion here, those are wonderful that we're having this discussion now, but I'm saying, we need to have the discussion, so you can say, I approve everything except for the number one and down, but we still have to decide, are we going to go with the co-op next year?
That decision will be made at the next month's meeting with whatever the, and you're saying.
In two weeks, in two weeks it has to be done.
This month's meeting, but our regular board meeting.
So is there a recommendation to approve the continuing of the co-op for next year?
Yeah, I don't understand why that, I mean, that isn't what this agenda item says, Seaha Hockey Co-op Proposal, of which I say we table indefinitely. There is nothing on this agenda that recommends what we should say for the co-op, am I right? I mean, I think that our administration should bring forth the recommendation to.
The co-op agreement has to be signed, and Matt, jump in.
It has to be done by March or by April first.
Okay, so, right, and that would be.
And I think it should be decided on next month, but there's noth, do you know what I'm saying here?
It's too late next month.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I keep saying that, our next meeting of this current month, but do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand exactly, what I'm doing is, I'm trying to say, we need to move forward, we need to approve this, but we need to have some understanding, so that we're not here again a year from now, and then a year after, then a year after, and a year after, because it's going to constantly come up over and over again. We need some structure, and I've heard that being asked for tonight, they're saying, what's the structure, what can we do, what numbers, and we're not going to come up with numbers, but there's a lot of things that play into this, and we as a board are being asked to unite and bring the community together, where you got groups that don't agree, and we as a board have to do our best for our district and our students.
I think, look, I think that Aaron is saying, and I, I might be wrong, Aaron, but I think that you're saying that you would like to see the co-op discussion being tabled, therefore, it would remain the same, correct?
That there, we're talking about two different avenues, this isn't the one and the same, one option is the Seaha proposal, that's on our agenda tonight, the other option is to continue with the co, current co-op, which is not on our agenda tonight.
No, I, I'm going to back up, we have one vote to make, not two votes.
I know that, okay.
I, I, I see what you're saying too.
Our one vote to make is, do you want to continue with the co-op or not? And if you say no, then we're going to have to go the other route, so we're not going to make a vote to say no to Seaha, Seaha, and yes to the other one.
I'm not saying, right.
We're, we're making one vote, and the vote is going to say, we're going to vote to continue with the co-op.
And I would like to see that as an administrative recommendation at our next meeting, so that.
We need to get a proposal to move it forward, and that's exactly where we're at.
I, wait.
No, we're done, we're, no, no.
Wait, wait a second, I.
No, we're boards in discussion here, thank you.
My, my big concern here is, we have two sides wanting the same thing, and so, you know, to have this side of the room sitting over here, and this side of the room sitting over here, that's the hard part, because that is not what this is about. This isn't about bringing high school hockey back to Spooner, so high school hockey is in Spooner, it's just in a different form at this point. Now, you've got kids that are playing at second grade level, and you've got kids that are playing at a junior level, and so, my, my problem with all of this is the mountains and mountains of information that we've been given to go over, and it's, it's our recommendation, yes, to make those decisions, but also to give all of that information to us, and have us sit here as a board and have an outcome, somebody's not going to be happy. You know, and that's, that is part of the process, but I think we all are looking at the same goal.
I agree.
Are we not?
I think, I think you're right.
We are, we, we, we really, we have an administration that is really doing a wonderful job. They give us recommendations, and oftentimes, boards follow those recommendations, sometimes they don't. In this situation, we received a recommendation at the very beginning, was to continue with the co-op.
So then we should have never come down this road.
The reason to come down the road is when people come, of the community come forward and say, how come my voice is not being heard by this board? How come the board will not listen to me? How come we haven't addressed this at the board level? And we, that's why we have a microphone at the center right here.
Right, for committee.
People get to come forward and make their point, and if that's, if they make their point, and the board wants to go along with this, that's a wonderful thing, the people have the right to see, these are our constituents here that need to come forward. I don't believe that we should be shutting them down ever, simply because we don't agree with them, there's a large group of people that do believe that this should be the right thing to do. I'm not saying I agreed or disagreed, I'm saying, we need to hear those people, we can't just say, no, don't bring it forward.
And I get that, but you're as, you're saying that this is a, this is an administrative recommendation, so Mr. Lucius, I'm going to ask you this question, have you been in contact with everybody, and are we all in agreement that at some point, within either a year or two, that we are going to be a standalone team? Have you, have, as, as you, Paul, call it, an administrative recommendation?
Mr. Lucius, you don't have to answer that question, let me interject if I could, I think that, if you want him to come down, you can, I'm not saying he can't speak.
That's fine.
All right, but I think what Paul said tonight was, that this, I, I think the schools involved will get together and make a decision as to what's best for the co-op, and when a team can stand alone, then they will, because, because every, there's five schools involved right now, you know, and, and if, and one school could, decision at this point could be in the end of another school's program. And the schools, some of the schools might not have even been considered in the proposal that was given to us, and it's like, surprise, we're going to leave, all right? I mean, that was, that's kind of what I feel it is, this is my own opinion, just so you understand that. And so, if the administrators and the athletic directors and the supporting group, the Seaha, and the existing group, the, the Icemen, could all get together in the same room, or maybe just the Icemen and the Seaha group could all get together in the same room and come up with a reasonable proposal that would be, that all the schools could be self-fulfilling and have a team, save the one that only has two members, that's what we want, I think we want.
Yes, I agree.
We want success for all of our teams.
Right.
All of our teams, and the other four schools that are involved in this co-op.
And I would also add to that, that it appears that everybody that has interjected also believes that what's best for Spooner hockey, and what's best for kids in Spooner, is to have hockey in Spooner. I don't think that's a question.
Correct.
The question is the timing and the process to arrive there, and that's sometimes as important as the outcome, which is why I am bringing issue with the process we've had to this point. And I've said my piece, but that was my point, I agree with that process to move forward, and I'm happy for it.
All right, and so, and, and I'd like to also point out that Brad said something that was, that was telling it too, that, that, you know, we need to work together, we're together in this room tonight, but there's still sides, and, and that sides thing has to be, that has to be away, that has to be thrown away, we have to get together, and, and we as a board, I kind of feel like we're Solomon, you know? That we're going to, we're going to, you know, do something that we don't really want to do, and we're not, we're not that wise. And we're not, we're not that wise, you know? We're just, um, we're just a Board.
I, I, I agree. We're, we're all looking for the same thing, what's best for our students. And I think that the process that we went through was a good exercise in hearing the sides for us as Board members, so that we as a Board can go to our community and say, everybody was given an opportunity to speak. We heard from all sides, that's why I tabled it at the last meeting, because I wanted to hear from more people. And we did hear from more people. I heard from hockey players, they're saying all sorts of things. I believe that we, uh, so that's the first thing, is that's the emotional part of it, because people have emotional tie, because it involves them. The other issue is we as a Board have to do what's best for our district. What's best for our district, what's best for as a whole, and what's best for our district, for our finances also. And that's the, the one thing I'm saying is that with, when we can get to where it will be more beneficial for us to run our own program, we will have to reassess where we're at. And that's where I believe the document that I have does outline some of that. When we get to, we need to get people to work together to say, when do we come out? And that's, that's the, the only topic that we're really having a big problem with is to say, should we come out and are we going to have a team?
I take issue with that's the only-
But the bottom lines comes down to, what's it going to cost us to have a standalone team versus send thirteen students on buses to give them the opportunity to play hockey? I'm thrilled that we're able to do that. A lot of schools wouldn't do that. A lot of schools don't have hockey for their students, not even a co-op. It's not, it doesn't get done. So we are giving our students opportunities by having the co-op to start with. And, and that's what I really feel good about, we're doing that. Um, the topic is, once you start doing that, when we get out, and that's why I say, this does have some type of outline. We don't have to go along with anything that's written on this piece of paper, other than to say, let's make the recommendation to go along with the co-op. We have a one-year contract to go along. And in the meantime, anybody can come forward and say, let's, let's put some policies together, some rules together, so that we don't have to come back and go through this every single year.
If we could see that, have it emailed to us, and I'm willing to vote on something like that, along with the copy, Hockey Co-op this month at our next meeting, but I'd like to read it and see it and know it before you read through A through E.
Well, if this was, this was the proposal and if nobody wants to go along with it, we'll just say, we'll table the rest of it. I'm, I'm okay with that.
We can vote it down next, well, okay, do it, can we do it as two separate items on the agenda next mo, next week?
So, so what, what you're suggesting is that we, that we decide on the co-op-
As a standalone-
Bring it up on the next meeting? And what's the other thing you want to decide on?
And then to, that this plan moving forward, assessing the process, that we can see it-
Well, it, it should be sent out to everybody and we can bring it up at the next call. Let's not push it too fast.
No. I would like to know, going forward, when we're deciding on the Hockey Co-op, what will go along for the plan for the next year?
Yeah.
And if you, so-
Well, let's put it, well, let's, let's, let's do this. Go ahead, let's approve it the way it is written and you can always revise it at the next meeting then.
That would be fine with me.
Okay, all right. Very good.
Can, can I, uh, interject one thing here that we're kind of missing? Um, this, kids are the central part of this. And this program is important and nobody likes hockey more than me. I'm a Junior League fan, I'm already on the list for tickets. But, uh, so I want to see this succeed. However, I, I am concerned about the numbers. And if we were to get out of a co-op and say, three years down the road, we don't have the numbers, I'm afraid that our options are done. Hayward does not need to have us. Barron will have moved on and that there, I am worried about what would happen to our program if those numbers drop as a standalone team. What would our options be at that point? The kids that are playing in the Icemen right now, a good chunk of them, if I'm not mistaken, have probably come through SEHA. SEHA's done a great job with them, but they're not having a voice in this process. And that there, so, just something to think about there. What's the alternative if the standalone does not work out?
Okay. Mr. Lucius, no need to come forward. If you'd like to, you can. Wait, I guess he's going first.
So when did that administrative recommendation, when was that revised? When was that submitted?
I'm not answering that question. You have something more you'd like to say?
Well, that's fine. Um, that would have saved us a heck of a lot of headache. And a heck of a lot of headache for everybody here. If that could have been a pathway provided six months ago when we first met with everybody, we wouldn't be standing here doing this.
I, I can tell you that the recommendation at the very beginning was to stay with the co-op proposal from our administration. That was the recommendation, period.
What's A through E?
The rest of this, if you want to talk about, that's for us to talk about up here.
Well, you read it into the record.
I, I read it.
Can you read it again for me? I don't remember it.
No. You can ask for it after the fact.
Okay, fair enough.
But the bottom line is that this is what the Board is discussing and deciding. We have to make one decision. The one decision is, are you going to go along with the co-op for next year? That's what we're here to vote on.
It is, but the self-evaluation process for us as a Board-
And also throwing in is to say, let's go along with it and we now will have an evaluation process to work forward. You don't have to go along with the evaluation process, you can change it, whatever you want it to be. We don't have to do any of that. The only issue we have to decide at the next meeting, once again, is, do we want to go forward with youth hockey next, with the co-op next year? That's all we're deciding. The recommendations can be tossed out the window.
They're not bad recommendations, Paul.
No, they're great recommendations.
Yeah, so-
But, but the bottom line is that, um-
Why didn't we hear one until today?
I'm going to ask you to sit down. We're, we're not here to interject back and forth with the audience. You had the opportunity to speak once before, so I'm going to ask you to have a seat, please.
Correct. You, you can, you can state your opinion, but we don't need to answer questions.
What you're doing is you're quizzing me on what our administration is doing and I don't think it's right for you to be quizzing us.
Paul, I just want to clarify one thing. I don't think that this falls on our administration entirely. I think that, what my point, to be clear, was that we allowed something as a Board that I don't believe we should have done. I don't believe that it was our place to do it. I think that we opened up, we did it badly. This process was done poorly and we are part of the problem. And that's what I'm trying to get us to do, is to assess and evaluate our role in this. And if we can all do that and accept blame on part of it, because I think that everybody made mistakes in this process, and I'm really hopeful that we can all self-assess and admit that. If we can do that, then the proposals can be hopefully instituted and we can move forward together. This idea of community comes with the ability to self-assess and admit wrongdoing. That is why I got a little heated and what I wanted to have come out of that conversation.
I didn't sense that at all.
I'm sorry about that, Paul, because the administrative guidelines were good, but when it came in and what we've allowed to occur in the process is part of the biggest problem, in my opinion.
Robert?
Just, uh, I've been listening, keeping my mouth shut, which I'm not really good at, as some people know in this community. I didn't get any recommendation until today. I'm, I'm, I'm listening to both parties. I've gotten a lot of emails from both sides and I came away thinking, boy, this is a problem. And I wish that these people would work together and come up with a recommendation they could both live with and present it to us and say, can you do this? And we'd say, done. We wouldn't be the referees. And you, this is kind of like the Republicans and the Democrats. They don't like each other. It's my opinion. Uh, I don't really want to apply that to you, because you probably like each other more than you think you do, because you have this common thing. You have your kids playing hockey and it's the game. What I would have liked to have seen was you guys hammer out the best deal so everybody gets something, nobody gets nothing. And you, you, because you need each other to play. If, if you, if you go with this group, then this group gets mad, they pull out. You need each other to make this successful. And if you compromise, we have nothing to decide. You have decided for yourselves what you want. And we're not the referee, because if we decide, half of you will be upset and the other half are going to be happy. We're not in that business. We're in the business of making everybody happy.
We're not-
And, but in terms of this recommendation, listen, I was, I'm free to vote any way I want. And I didn't know that they were making a recommendation until tonight, but I'm not bound to do anything they want. And I usually don't. That's why, um, I, I personally vote against the administration on occasion. I'm not bound to anything. And, so don't read too much into this recommendation, because I didn't get it. Erin says she didn't get it.
It's here on our table and my apologies for not seeing that.
Well, it is now, but it's not like some, some plot to go against the SEHA-
No.
And it was done all along ago. I didn't know anything about it. So as far as I'm concerned, there wasn't a recommendation until tonight. But I'm not bound by it. In fact, I may not even agree with it.
Right.
So I don't think you should read too much into that. We're sitting here listening to all of this and every one of us is free to decide anything we want. But I wish that we weren't, because it's, you're putting this on us and I wish that you could just work it out yourselves. You need each other. All we would do is create more division. And again, I, listen, I've said my piece, I wish you would do, do it that way.
There's a gentleman back there, would like to speak. And then we're, we're nearly done with this topic. Not that I want to shut anybody down from saying anything, but, um, we have discussed this.
My name's Doug Lean, I own the new junior team that's coming to town.
Who, what's your name again?
Doug Lean.
Thank you, Doug.
Um, I have kept my mouth shut all along on this whole thing from both sides. I'm a small business owner. I can't afford to alienate either side of the fence on this thing. Uh, I can speak to you on the hockey end of it. This isn't an Iceman, this isn't a SEHA comment. Uh, and then I want to add something else to it. You're going to lose kids. And I say this from the junior level. If players come up through a youth organization and they do not see a pathway to play for their hometown, or what they deem as a viable program in their area, whether that be a co-op or their, the Icemen versus Spooner example, they're going to leave. If there's turmoil, they'll leave. Moms and dads invest too much money into these kids, it's absurd. And they are not willing to sacrifice thirteen to fifteen years of getting that kid to the point of making a decision, whether it's high school, whether it's juniors, prep school, whatever it may be, to sit around and just sit on their hands. They're just not going to do it. And youth associations will then lose numbers, because families at the younger ages will say, well, we're not going to stay here either. Because we're not going to get to sixteen and seventeen and then pull the pin on the grenade and make the decision to pull their kid out. They're going to leave, they're going to go to a shattick. They're going to go, they're just going to move to another town, they'll move to Hayward. They'll move to Superior, they'll move to Verona, wherever it may be. Those are the decisions within the game of hockey that these families make. That's absurd. All of you as a Board of Education, me as an educated adult, that's absurd to pick up your family and your, your, your life and move for a sport at the age of, say, six or seven. That's the, that's the dissolution and the, that is the, the frame of mind that these people are in. They, they live in a different planet and a different world. And that's not right or wrong, I'm not saying that either way. I depend on high school teams, I depend on youth associations to develop players for us to then go out and scout and recruit and bring to a junior team. You, you have deeper ramifications, whatever side, whatever decision you make, it has deeper impact in the community than just saying whether we're going to, as a community, whether you as a school board or as a, 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 a school district are going to fund, whatever dollar amount that is, a hockey program. So when you look at it, you've got it, you've got to dig below the surface. And your youth association is going to start to struggle at whatever decision, if there's a clear pathway. If you don't make a clear, concise decision and with your voice stand behind it, it's going to have deeper ramifications. So that's simply a hockey thing. That's not advocating for SEHA, that's not advocating for, for the Icemen. The second thing I guess I wanted to talk about is, is this, is as a community member, I feel very, uh, suppressed when I hear a member of my school board tell me that the process of the community coming up here and speaking is, was done the wrong way. Staff, administration is no different than a, a, a city council. City council gets their recommendations from staff. Staff will actually come up and speak on an agenda item, give their recommendation. At that point, the public forum opens up. Staff recommendation is, is a, is a professional suggestion to the elected officials, you. So it is, it is part of our constitution, is a part of our, our, our process, due process of, I'm a taxpayer, you're, you're my elected officials. We elected you. So it is our right to stand up and challenge what our elected officials are doing through our voice, through the First Amendment. So that's, that's a little bit, um, that's a little bit of a kick in the teeth to hear that. So, and I appreciate you for standing up for the ability to have the microphone here and us to have a voice, so.
Well, Mr. Lean, if you're speaking to me, because I asked Mr. Lucius that he didn't have to speak, I was just, he was just going to stand up and come down here.
That's not what I was referring to.
All right.
Staff made their recommendation, whatever that was, and that had nothing to do with it. What I, what I was referring to was simply the comments that were made by Ms. Birch and the fact that she felt the process was done incorrectly.
So can I respond to that?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I think that as a Board, and I don't know how long you've been a part of our community, but we've gone to great lengths to include community in our process and give voice to community, which is a lot of why we do the Committee of the Whole, to allow for that voice. But the process to get an agenda item on an agenda should go through and be vetted through our administration. A Board shouldn't be able, and at times, I mean, it's allowable to say, yes, we're going to put something on the agenda and override our administration. But when that's done, as this I think fully shows, it doesn't always lend to a good process and a good outcome. I think that we set up the Committee of the Whole so that anybody can come, listen, know what's going to be on the agenda and have opportunity to speak to it. Had we done this in a different fashion and we had just had an administrative recommendation to continue with the current co-op, and these are our reasons, or not given our reasons, SEHA and you would have had the opportunity to come at any of-
Don't include me in it. I'm, I'm simply here as a taxpayer and community member.
But I'm just saying, as you as a taxpaying community member, could have come to any of those Committee of the Holes. And even our regular Board meeting, we allow forty-five minutes for community comment on anything that's on, that is actually for anything, if I'm-
Correct.
Correct. So I do not negate the First Amendment right and your right as a taxpayer or anyone in our community to have opinion on what we decide or the direction that we're going. We've gone to great lengths to provide opportunity in a controlled and what is, I don't know how to explain it, but a good way of doing things, a good way of doing business, a polite way of doing business. And given the opportunity to speak on that topic, SEHA could have at that time come and said, wait a minute, this isn't good. And we could have tabled then that agenda item and said, hold on, we need to reassess the Hockey Co-op and we need to look at these other options. But the way that this played out really pitched and put two groups against each other and us in the middle. And I don't care, I mean, I love people, but I don't really care if I offend people[1702.88] I offend people by my decision. My job here is not to make people happy. My job here is to do what's best for kids, hands down. And I get our responsibility for district finances and all of that, but I didn't mean that I don't value the community's input and their opinion. I just think that there are better ways to garner that, and more professional ways to reach decisions.
I accept that explanation. And, and, and just to clarify one thing, my business depends, as I said, on, on taking kids, whether there's a Barron team and a separate standalone Spooner team. I'm still going to go scout and recruit kids from both teams. I'm non-discriminate as to where I get my players from. The whole point is to put a roster together of the best qualified players. So being a Spooner community member, and I'm from Hayward, so, that's where my family's from, so I, I get small town, I get the politics, I get the passion behind it all, and, and I understand that. It, it, Spooner having a team and Barron having a team, using those two as the example, it makes no difference to me at the end of the day. But as I qualify that statement, to say, I'm a member of this community in Spooner, uh, and, and I would expect, and I'm not, I'm not speaking again on the, the, the decision you have, all I'm speaking to is this, is that I would expect that you, as our elected officials, to represent the, the community at large in making these decisions, I would expect that there is some forethought to say, we care about Spooner. Spooner is our first priority, not second, third, fourth down the line. And, and at some point, you do have to take care of your own before you worry about survivability of others. That's just human nature, and that's just the business that we're all in. So if you want to talk about co-ops, it's an exact reason why you don't see a co-op school board with Barron, Cumberland, Shell Lake, Spooner, Wirehauser, all, all those. You don't see that, do you? Because it's your job as elected officials by our community to put Spooner first. So that's all I'm saying.
And I would just like to say one thing. If six years ago, when we only had six hockey players, if the co-op that happened six years ago had taken that, and I'm not saying that's the approach that you're offering, but I just think that we have to have perspective to say that if they had said, we're going to only care about Barron, and we're not going to take on these six Spooner players because we've got enough to house a team, and I'm really sorry, but you're going to have to go find another place to play. If we do that, and you know how that, that would have put us in a bind? If we do that in return, and this whole idea of community doesn't just stick, even though Spooner is what should be our focus, but that can't be our only, you know, it's about kids, and it's about giving opportunities to kids. And I think that's why the co-op was formed six years ago, and I think that going forward, that has to be a factor in the equation.
Absolutely.
To reciprocate that generosity.
Absolutely. And there's a prime example, and I hope, I hope you look at this case study, St. Paul Johnson. It's a school in Minnesota.
Well, let's, let's not do that, okay?
I'm just saying, they, they, they went through that whole process.
Our priority is preparing each student for a successful future. That's our mission statement, and that's what we stand by.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Doug.
Thank you for your submission.
Oh, boy. Now, Brad, you said you were not going to say another word.
Oh, Paul.
We limited it two times.
No, I just think that we've made a decision on this. We've tabled this decision for the, and we've.
We haven't tabled it.
Well, not, no, we haven't tabled it.
No, we have not.
So we've decided what we're going to put on the agenda in March.
We have decided. We have already, do we agree?
Is there a recommendation to go along?
Yes. I make the recommendation that we move this to the full board as it is.
Is there consensus?
Yes, I agree with that. And so, for those of you that have a thought, we are, we are done, we have made that recommendation. All right?
Did you clarify what's going to go forward?
We're moving forward, the fact that, that.
The recommendation is to, uh, participate in the co-op for the next year. That agreement has to be in by April 1st. We have to make that decision by April 1st, and that will be at our next board meeting to continue the co-op into the next year, one more year.
And, and anyone that would, would have liked to speak anymore, we're, we're really done with this topic, um, for tonight. We also have community comments. Next time, there's 45 minutes allowed at our next meeting for community comments.
One, one second. You're talking about number one, but the way I understand it, the rest of number two and number three, correct?
No, the rest of them, we didn't. What we made, we have to make a decision.
I understand that.
That's the only thing we're recommending. The rest of this stuff are recommendations from the board. You can either accept or not accept them at the next meeting.
That's, but we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
These are just recommendations. That's just like having your notes in your file.
All right.
There's nothing that says those are binding in any way. Those are recommendations. The only thing we have to do is make a decision, yea or nay, to go along with the co-op.
And so are the, are these, are two and three going to be?
We can continue to discuss that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's not what we're here to decide tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
It never was posted as that way. This is recommendations into the future.
Okay. All right. So, on to the next item. Item E, educator effectiveness transition proposal. Oh, that was created on Paul, I'm sorry.
We, we, um, we already discussed that, and made that recommendation to bring it forward to the top of this.
We did.
Yes.
All right. And now is the last item, which is review of the meeting, reflection of committee of the whole meeting.
Yes.
Paul?
Can I stop? I am thrilled that we can have discussions like this. One year ago, at a meeting that we used to have curriculum meetings, the board was not there. We are here tonight. It's not that we have to agree, we're working our way through this process. I think it's a good process. Erin, I agree with you. Maybe we got to get these out quicker next time. That's all.
That's.
I agree with you. A lot, a lot of things, we, we agree on so much, but in reality, we're doing so much better than we were, because a year ago, we had a topic that came up that nobody knew what was going on, and that was part of the problem, is nobody knew what was going on a year ago, and we went through a process for a different topic. This time, I wanted to go out of the way to make sure everybody knew. I really go out of my way to make sure everybody knew what was going on in this one, and the topic then comes up is, should we, are we putting too much out there, and did we spend enough time on it?
I would say this. What is our job as a school board, and what should our focus be? And if our focus should be our strategic priorities, and we had an amazing presentation from a group of people who invested an entire year on mathematics, benchmarks, and goals, and did great work for kids, for academic achievement and great work for kids, and we spent five minutes talking about that. And I read no emails from the community, I didn't have any input on any part of that. And for hockey, which I love, I love hockey, I have kids in SEHA, but we have spent, I've spent hours upon hours upon hours, reading, talking, trying to figure out. And we could have avoided all of that and focused on things that I believe, and this, it's not that it doesn't matter, I'm not trying to negate it, but it is so much, should take so much less of our attention, our time, our community's time, than our academic achievement, than the terrific work we're doing on ELA and math, and the things that we're going to be assessing and evaluating in the future. The fact that we just approved a CPI increase and a next step without any conversation. I never thought, when I started on the board, that that would be part of our general board meeting, that when we approved teacher contracts, that would be happening. I just feel like our focus has shifted and we need to shift back, and that does not lessen